Let's get this party started. What do you think?
Sounds like a plan.
All right. It's a work session, so we don't follow any strict rules per se. I'm going to start off, obviously, we're here to talk about 5701. Merriam Drive, and we have received a lot of information, but I'm going to open this up with asking either Chris or someone from the city to kind of give us some some directions perhaps.
Sure. Great. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council for tuning in this evening. The topic of this work session is the future of the building and/or property at 5701 Merriam Drive, also known as the Irene B. French Community Center and one-time Merriam School, one-time, I think, community college at some point in time, and I think maybe even there was a Christian school, a Kansas City Christian school in that building at one point in time. So a lot of different markers for people to remember that building. But the reality is, is that this is the day that we knew was going to come somewhere between occupying the new building, which means vacating the existing one, and establishing a budget for 2021. And that is for us to decide what is the future of that building. Having no real intention of going back and debating the history of it unless so inclined by everyone on the the call this evening. Really, you know, this was, as I mentioned, we're getting ready to vacate this building here within the next forty-five or so days, maybe even sooner than that. We've got some money in the budget this year to decide what we want to do moving forward, and we need to understand from the council what they would like us to do so we can decide what kind of money we need to put in the budget for the out years. As a quick reminder, council approved in the budget last year $650,000, about $620,000 of which is left for this year in 2020. Well, clearly, we're not comfortable saying let's maybe spend that today. We will know more or less within the next couple of months what our finances look like. So that money very well and likely could be available for this year to do something with it, whether that is to start by, we could choose to tear it down. Tearing it down, according to the 5701 committee report, would be about $560,000. Or design fees to design something with the intent of keeping it would be about $550,000. So whatever the council decides they would like to do, I believe we have the money budgeted this year to start it, make a move forward. We clearly don't have enough money to do all of anything, but we can definitely at least start it. Keeping in mind that when we vacate it, we don't have a purpose for it. It will continue to need to be maintained. We'll have to keep the air condition in the roofs from leaking and making sure the sump pumps are working. Currently, we project the utility usage on that building to be somewhere $35,000 to $40,000. I think we've budgeted $38,000 for next year in case. It's currently in the budget. If, depending on what we say tonight, we will take it out of the budget if that building is not going to be there. But we would anticipate that's what the utilities will cost. That is not for, assuming no decisions made, that's not for any of the upkeep or maintenance. That's strictly just for the utility usage for next year. So let's go ahead and jump into, I'm going to give a presentation that you should all have that was in the packet, just really as a primer. And then my hope is, is that the council will ask questions, deliberate, debate, share their opinions of what they would like to see. Or if there's things that are missing in this presentation, I just gave what I thought was a good high-level view of our options and our pros and cons, really just to spur the conversation. It's really up to you as the council to determine what the direction is, provide that to staff. So that being said, again, at the end of this, our hope is to have some sort of direction forward on what you would like to see done with that facility. I do believe, and I'll take a head nod from Meredith, that this is being recorded. So this will be able to, we will post this, we will push this out as a work session. Just as a reminder, for those that have, maybe haven't been through a whole lot of these, if we were meeting in person, there'd be no, there is no public comment. This is strictly a conversation for the council to have with staff to get a better grip on, or a better understanding on an issue. So we will, we will not make any formal motion tonight. However, any any consensus that is gathered this evening will help inform staff's moves to bring back to council, if that makes sense. So again, sharing what your thoughts and opinions are in the future will help us present something formally to council that actually moves, moves us further down the line. So I'm going to go ahead and bring up my presentation, I hope. I hope people can see that?
Yep.
You can.
Awesome. Okay, so future 5701 Merriam Drive, little bit of background I just covered, but I'll cover it again. Park Department's moving out of the community center in June at the latest. No other civic use is currently identified. That doesn't mean that there couldn't be something. It just means that we don't have any use currently identified. There's significant problems in the building that are costly to repair. The land is a potential asset. I think the building's a potential liability just because of the bullet point before, the problems that are costly to repair. I think we need to acknowledge the area context and the surrounding land use. What I mean by that simply is that this is a building that is sitting in, it's surrounded by somewhat industrial, kind of a gritty part of downtown, business district, if you will, that, well, there's always the hope that someone could come in and buy this and do some sort of great private development. I think that, you know, that this is just one parcel in the middle of many other parcels. And if someone comes in, a private third party comes in to purchase this, it will likely be more aligned with what's already there, more so than perhaps what we might wish or hope, or the community might wish or hope shows up there. Empty building costs are about $38,000. The upkeep cost is unknown, as I mentioned before. There's about $630,000 available in the current budget, and there's a 2020 cars project on Merriam Drive. I only put that in there because I think it's important that we be aware of the fact that with that cars project on Merriam Drive in 2022, between Johnson Drive and 55th Street, anything that occurs on Merriam Drive that's relative to the street, even if it's relative to a future project at 701, we believe is 50, 50 cents on the dollar reimbursable. So I'll get into it. I think I have it mentioned in a bullet point a little bit later. But I, point being is that if we wanted to do angled-on-street parking or things like that that are going to turn the 5701 into this kind of a downtown civic square gathering space, we could perhaps have all of those improvements on the street reimbursed at 50 cents on the dollar, which I think is, that's what we do in Merriam. We try to take advantage of those opportunities. So clearly, big decision to make, lot of history here. The council, back in fall of 2018, at Mayor's, Mayor and council appointed a 5701 committee. It was made up with residents with relevant backgrounds. So there was a couple council members, a couple staff members on there. I think it's important to talk about the relevant backgrounds that they had. We had architects. I think there was engineers. We had general contractors. We had downtown Merriam reps. I think probably half of the people on that committee were new people on committees that we didn't know other than their backgrounds, and we put them on there specifically because we thought the diversity of age distribution throughout the city, their diverse backgrounds would, would lend to the decision-making process as opposed to it being too focused on one particular population group or, you know, we just felt like the diversity of ideas and opinions on that committee, we're going to put, put a better plan together, and I think I would, I believe that they did. They worked with a consulting team of Collins, Notheis and Associates. Bob Collins was the city manager of Kansas City, Missouri. Vicky Notheis was the community development director. And then we worked with Confluence, who we've worked on several projects with, independent of the 5701 committee, but these two groups are also part of our comp plan that just happened to be a coincidence, but they are people that are familiar with the city, the things that we've been doing, the things that we aspire to do. And having them be the consulting team to work with our residents, I thought worked really, really, really well. And it was a public, public process. We had outreach. We had a website that we updated. We had public input meetings. We had several committee meetings. So I can't say enough good things about the committee or the work that they produced, or the effort that they put in. So as they were trying to work through that process and try to get as much input as they could and try to wrap their heads around it, they developed a couple over, overall themes. They wanted to create an area for community gathering, increase the quality of life for residents, include an educational component, do something as a strong sense of community. That was, that was pretty important to them. Something that provides some option if flood control happens. They didn't want to, with knowing that we have a core project in the hopper, perhaps, maybe some, someday soon. They didn't want to do something that was going to stand in the way if, if that occurs. And then they wanted to be mindful of taxpayer dollars, as we all do. So I applaud them on these overall themes. I thought these were very good themes to guide their work. So after they developed those themes, they went through their goals for future use. And that was to minimize the cost and maximize revenue wherever possible. They felt that it was important to make a decision now. They don't want to waste taxpayer dollars. And they felt like the city should keep the property as an asset and find the greatest community value for 25 to 50 years, not any type of short-term gain. They were looking at the long play. And again, all of these goals, the themes, all of these, these were all shared with the public. And actually, I believe vetted by the public in the first public meeting that these were good, good goals, that these were things that we should aspire to as we make our decisions. So these were not just the goals of the committee. These were actually shared with the public and agreed upon. Couple strategies that they felt would make sense, created downtown catalyst. Again, how can we spur development downtown? Again, downtown, you know, it's, it's not new. It's the context of downtown is somewhat auto-centric, not very walkable, not very retail-ish. But I think that, I think the overall theme was that they'd like to see whatever we do become a catalyst and start to spur some interest in downtown. Create active and distinct public open spaces. We tried to do with all of our open space. And then ultimately preserve as much as possible of the 1911 structure. That was something that they felt was a nice compromise. One of the things that they heard throughout the process, what we all heard throughout the process, was that people would like to save the building, but people did not want to pay to save the building. People didn't want their taxes raised. They did not feel like an investment. And saving that building was, was, did not meet the same criteria, or at least did not rank as highly as saving the building. Saving the building was very important, but not paying for saving the building was a little bit more important. Was, was an asset, but if possible, please try to save it. So this is, this is a slide from their presentation to council. So they recommended option B, or B1, which is save as much of the building, original building as possible. So please vacate it by June of 20, demolish the 385189 additions in the fall of this year, if possible. This was last July of 19, I believe, when this was presented. Proceed to the design phase with knowledgeable consultants, including structural assessment of 1911 building issues and detailed site and landscape plan, and then keep the residents plugged into the process and what it was going to cost. So at the conclusion of that, and I'm going to probably jump in ahead here, but at the conclusion of that, we went ahead at council's direction, and we got the structural assessment for the 1911 building to see if we could carve away the 385189 portions, and it is possible. So not to give you too much of a preview of what you're going to see here in a couple slides, but that is one of the things that we were waiting on, other than budget season to get here, is that we, we have had a structural assessment of that building done. So here's concept BB1. What you can see is you've got multiple playgrounds. So 57th on the north, 58th on the south, Merriam Drive there on the left, I-35 on the right, north is up. So you've got a couple multi-generational playgrounds there. You've got the 1911 event space, which is the gray block with an adjacent patio. You've got some streetscape that's out there, angled parking, which I think looks attractive and has a kind of downtown feel to it. There's some plantings, a lawn and a band shell. And then right in the middle, they've identified what they call the Irene B. French Memorial. However, in other iterations, it's really, it kind of, it's a historical something, whatever it is. I think that meets the desire of folks that wanted to make sure that we honor our past and honor our history and not forget it at that site, even if that 1911 building were to stand or otherwise. So that's the concept. Here's a couple views. This is a view from the north. This is looking towards Johnson Drive, so where the prairie and all green starts there at the top of the picture. That's about Johnson Drive. You've got the highway to the left and Merriam Drive to the right. We are hovering above Linden Auto, I think is probably about what we're hovering above. But you can see your play areas in there, your central historical feature, your stage, and then a box where the building was. The reason that that was just in this picture and the other pictures was that because we didn't know if it was going to actually be able to be saved, but that's where it would sit relative to the rest of the site. Here's a view from the northwest. This is hovering over the corner at 57th and Merriam Drive, looking towards probably the railroad crossing. And IKEA would be in the far distance, but that general direction to the south we're looking, I think gives a good idea of what the angled-on-street parking looks like and some of the streets, streetscape that potentially we could have there, I think would add some, would soften some of that. I think it would look pretty nice if that was the direction we decided to want to go. The, the committee liked the on-street parking idea. And then this is a view from the southeast. This is hovering above Kessler, looking towards, oh, Sonic. But you can see the amphitheater, bandshell, the central historical feature where the building would sit relative, the play areas. Marketplace would be to the immediate left. You can kind of see where the, the green corner of the lawn over there. But this is generally what they presented to the council as their, their recommendation is to save that building and integrate it into the surrounding features that would be updates and improvements to that, that property. So, so I think what we have before us, at least this is the way I thought it would make the most sense to structures, is to really look at the potential opportunities we have at that site. We have a recommendation from 5701. It's, it's a recommendation to council. Council does not have to take it. But I think that it is an option. I think that it's a fine option to, to, to head that general direction. But I, three general directions, three very broad categories I think we have are we could save the building, improve and reuse, we could tear down the building and improve, or we could sell and divest ourselves of that property. I'm sure there are other decision trees that would flow out of here a little differently than what I've presented, and I'm happy to listen to those, facilitate, answer questions when council starts to discuss them. These are just really broad categories of, of opportunity that, that I saw that I thought would broadly cover our, our options that we have. So the first one, save, improve and reuse. That's concept B1. I've got a price range on that. It's probably more than this, but 6.3 to 6.8 million dollars. There's some potential tax credits of $850,000 on that site. The 5701 committee report estimated about $4.2 million for concept B1, B2. That was with $2.6 million to save the 1911 building and then $1.6 million in improvements that go around that site. As I mentioned before, we have a structural report of what it will cost to save that building and carve the other buildings off of it. And that's actually going to range somewhere between 4.7 and 5.2. So if you take the 4.7 and 5.2 plus your $1.6 million in improvements, you're looking at about 6.3 to 6.8 million dollars. I think the pros of that are we absolutely maintain control. That's, that's an important thing. I think we all agree it would honor what the committee said. And I think most of what I've heard in, in conversations is we should try to maintain control of that site. It does create a downtown catalyst, we would hope. We can bring Turkey Creek Fest, Merriam Drive Live, enhance the car show perhaps down there. We could, I think we could really do some cool things downtown with this option. It does preserve the historical schoolhouse, which is something that the committee also wanted us to look into doing. And we've heard from numerous folks in the community that we should try to save the building. Again, it creates synergy with Marketplace. We, we, we would have to issue bonds quite likely if we were going to do this, but now is the time to do it. If there was ever a time, cost of borrowing is low. We've got a great bond rating. We have debt capacity to do so. We have a couple of years until some debt starts to expire. But if the council wanted to, we could clearly make this a priority, and now would be the time to borrow. Some of the cons that we identified are that, you know, that the cost doesn't include tenant finish, and it doesn't include ADA, life safety or outside site work. So what's that, what that means is it essentially restores it to a 1911 building with the interior makeup of the building exactly what it is now. So since we don't have an end user and we don't have projected use, if people come in and want to use it and they want walls to look like this, or they want this room to be, you know, to exit out to here or things like that, that's not included in this cost. So that, that's an additional cost that would need to be passed on to an end user, or the city would need to come up with those additional funds if we were going to be landlord or lease agent, which would be my next point. Doesn't include ADA. Anybody that's familiar with buildings made before probably the 50s or 60s prior to ADA, you know, to get in this building, you have to, you have to go up steps. So if we were to carve off, that was actually the biggest improvement we made in 1989 was to make it ADA accessible, put an elevator in it. I think lower the entry to get in there, if I recall. But it would, would not be ADA. We would carve all those things away, and you would have to walk up steps to get in that building. There'd be no life safety. The reason, well, there's life safety, but depending on the ending use is going to dictate how much more life safety-type things like sprinklers we need, because those are based upon, I believe, density and where rooms go and things like that. So that is not included. Those things can be pretty costly for those that were around or remember the conversations we had about trying to sprinkler the French Center, oh, probably about six, six years ago when we moved the gym. You'll remember that it was, I think it was a quarter million dollars to sprinkle the building. And there's no outside site work included in that. The other con, no projected use. The city's would be a landlord or a lease agent. And I think if we sell it after we make the improvements, there's going to be little return on investment. I do not believe that if we sank six, seven, eight million dollars in there and then decided to sell it, we're going to get any of that money back, to be quite honest with you. I think we would keep the building. I think we would ensure that that building would be there for, without last, all the rest of us. But the context of what develops around it and what it gets used for, we won't have a whole heck of a lot of say, and we're not going to get that money back, I do not believe. And then there's no current source of funding, as I shared. Tear down, improve is another, and improve is another option. Really, what I call that is that's concept C from 5701, which was really, it's essentially what you just saw without that gray box on it. So it's, option C is this without the 1911 picture on it. I think that the amphitheater has a different orientation, but generally, it's all of these same elements. It's parking. It just removes the 1911 feature. And so that one, based on 5701, the demo and the stones, the stone salvage would be about $560,000. Then the improvements would be about 1.9. The improvements on this option are a little bit more expensive because if we tear down 1911, we're going to need a restroom facility out there eventually. Not to say that we couldn't just encase Porta Johns and save some money. But that's why it's just a tad bit more on this concept. And basically, this one salvages the stone. We could get in there. We could sell. And not all of it, but it, you know, a certain degree of it. I think we could save some of those pieces of, of this building, of the 1911 building for future use. So pros of this option, as I see them, are, once again, maintain control, create catalyst, Turkey Creek Fest, Merriam Drive Live Downtown. You do eliminate the long-term cost of building maintenance. So maintaining that building is, that is a cost center, especially if we're not in it. And then this suggested improvement doesn't, doesn't impact long-term commercial development, which was a goal of the 5701 committee. If, if at some future time downtown started to develop 10, 15, 20, 30, 50, 80 years from now, whatever impact we would have on this property would not, would not be difficult to undo by some sort of commercial redevelopment if that was to happen. Some cons, it does remove a tangible connection to schoolhouse. Those folks that went to school there or have grown accustomed to just always being there because it has just always been there for the majority of the population. It's gone. It's, it's not going to be there. The best we could do with this option would be to, again, save some of those relics, some of those stone, cornerstone, make sure we honor the past through some sort of historical interpretive garden or something. But, but the school will be gone. Another con is the ongoing maintenance of the property. Doing this, sure, even if we take that 1911 building down, if we do some, some upgrades and some improvements to that site, we will, we'll have to take care of it. We're going to have to cut the grass. We're going to have to do annual plantings there. We're going to have trees to trim. There'll be play equipment that'll need to be replaced every X years and inspected every year. So, so there will be, if, if, if what you're looking for is zero cost, this is not a good option either. And there will be less generation of revenue compared to potential commercial use. But again, keeping in mind what, what the likelihood and probabilities of use would be at this site, I don't know. I mean, it's, but, but yeah, we're not going to generate a whole heck of a lot of revenue on a, on a civic square type of development. And then the last option, as I see it, is you can sell and divest. We could sell it. I, you know, I think we could sell it somewhere between half a million and $2.6 million. We would need an actual appraisal needed if this is the option. I'm using best available information that I think would be appropriate for downtown. The Joko Appraiser says that the land's worth $425,000 and the structure's worth 2.1. I don't agree with that, but that is basically what, if we, if we were a tax-paying entity, we would pay property taxes on $2.6 million for that piece of property. I personally believe that that land's a little undervalued. I think that the structure reuse removal is a big consideration in the sale price. I think anybody that comes in that doesn't want that building is going to want to bake the cost of removing that building, which we know is going to cost, you know, half a million dollars, 600,000 or something in that neighborhood. They're going to want to bake that into the sale cost. If they come in and they want to reuse that building, they're going to have to bake some improvements into that cost. And I just, I think it's going to make it difficult to sell. And I think, well, I don't know that it'll make it difficult to sell, but I think it's going to make it difficult to figure out what the right price is. So we would need some sort of actual appraisal needed down there if we were going to sell it. I think the pros of selling it, it's a one-time revenue source. If we could net, you know, somewhere between half a million dollars and $2.6 million, that's great. It's a one-time revenue source, and it eliminates those long-term maintenance costs. It is quite possible, as I've mentioned before, I want to be upfront and honest about this. It could be privately redeveloped. I can't tell you that it wouldn't. But I think you got, as I've mentioned, floodplain considerations. I think likely any major development down there that we would all see as being desirable, likely is going to need some incentives for those internal rates of return and some return on investment again, because there's going to be cost of updating that building or tearing that building down to get it to a point where somebody could actually do something with it. It's not impossible. It's not something we haven't done or haven't considered. It's just something that I, I believe likely would need to occur with this particular site. And other pros, it could end up on tax rolls. If it was privately redeveloped, you know, if the land's worth $425,000 and somebody puts a new structure, or they use the existing one, that's money back, back on the tax roll. So I think that would be a pro if we sold it. Cons, it's not a city asset. I think that's, that's a big con, in my view. We've got limited control in any revitalization efforts. I think anything that happens downtown in terms of being a catalyst, the city's going to need to lead the charge on that and, and selling it, I think, is this point, the second bullet point points out. I think it sends a message that we're abandoning our history downtown if we just sell it to the highest bidder. But it is, absolutely could be done. And I think we have minimal long-term control of rent use. I think what we, we could maybe put some restrictions on it, but you know, once it sells and sells to the next guy or, or some, you know, company X buys it and sells it to company Y that they just create an LLC, I'm not sure that those restrictions are going to go with it forever. My guess is, is probably you're going to see one of those three things likely at that site just because of the surrounding context. You're going to see a pop-up church like happened at South Park Elementary. You're going to see a used car lot, or you're going to see some sort of nonprofit organization move in there that's going to take advantage of it. That's not to say that that nonprofit organization may not have a, a great social value to our community, but it's, it won't be revenue-producing and it won't be anything that we have control over. Again, not to say that it may not have great social value to our community. Just, that's likely what's going to move into a, a building like that. So again, those are, those are, as I see it, those are your three. So again, those are, those are, as I see it, those are your three kind of broad potential opportunities for use. I did put a bullet point in here that I think as discussion starts, if anybody has any others, I mean, clearly there are probably going to be nuanced ones that fall under the three I have. But if there's any other broad categories that I've missed, we we would be interested to hear and explore those with the council as they discuss them. So we can do discussion or I, we can just jump right into my recommendation, which is two slides and then we don't have to come back to this. Is there any preference? I can't see a mayor, but what do you think?
Go ahead and finish up and then they'll give us something to talk about potentially.
Okay. Staff recommendation, as staff looks at all of these and staff has been part of these conversations since the very beginning and staff are the ones that probably most intimately know this building and and what it takes to maintain it and has been part of the fifty seven oh one committee and part of the master plan committee and comp plans and all of the things that try to wrap up what Mariam could be, aspires to be, has been. You know, people would like to see it be, it looks at all of this information. And and I think based on all of that information and really the the SFS reported just what it's going to cost to save the building. The recommendation that staff would make is that 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 building, we just don't have the money for that building. That that building, that building needs to come down. I would include the north parking lot in that. I think we should remove that building. We should plant grass and we should wait. I don't think we should go forward with any improvements. We could put money in the budget, but I don't think we should go through with any improvements this year, other than tearing the building down just because I don't know what the budget's going to look like in out years. I think that part of, part of the contract for demoing that building, we're going to need the folks to salvage what I call the relics, which is going to be our cornerstone and some additional building stone. I think it's important, you know, we've got building that faces Mariam Drive that's has a kind of the pale look on it. I think if we could save those and incorporate those into something somewhere down the road, I think that honors our history. It gives something for people to actually go up and touch. It keeps some of that tangible history that 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 has made Mariam what it is. And then I think we should explore opportunities for someone to come in there and say, and we actually have. I think we've had somebody, had somebody in there on Friday, I believe. Come in and look at the opportunity to take as much out of there as will benefit the public as possible. I don't mean allowing the public in there, but I mean organizations such as Operation Restore Habitat for Humanity that could come in and take fixtures and things like that and find some sort of value of and really defer them from landfill and and find a good home for them again. There's, I'm sure there's people that would like some of the old wood or some of those fixtures that that I think we should, we should explore the possibility of doing that. I think the pros of this option are retains control of the property, eliminates the cost of building maintenance as opposed to just letting it sit there for a while. The relics will be used to honor the past and it fits the education piece of the fifty seven oh one committees. Some of their guiding principles. I think it does create a synergy with the marketplace that's right across the street. I can imagine with whatever we do there, if it looked anything like the pictures, I think we have started to create a sense of community down there. It's a place that I think Turkey Creek Festival would be most appropriately hosted somewhere down the road. The car show, I think, would probably be kicked up a notch or two if you had that. And clearly Mariam Drive Live Downtown, that would be a heck of a venue for things like that. And it is the most flexible, least expensive option to retain ownership. We're going to keep ownership of that. I I think this is, this is the way we do it until we decide what the long term answer is to that, or at least where the funding for the long term answer. I mean, I ultimately concur with the fifty seven oh one committee that I think we need to put a ban shell in the parks in the destination playgrounds and things like that. I just don't know the right time to do that. But I think this is the most flexible, least expensive option to get there and have us still retain ownership. The cons are, there's costs. If you're a, I don't want this to cost any money or I want to absolutely minimize the cost of that property and I don't care about the long term viability of it. This, this option does not meet any of those goals. There will be cost of keeping this and updating it over the course of the next fifty, thirty, forty, sixty years, whatever it is. The emotional ties to the old school may not easily transfer to the new amenities. That's a possibility that exists also. And that city investments, no guarantee of additional private investment. I just wanted to be careful that, you know, even though I'm using the words here and the committee used downtown catalyst, there's no guarantee that we make this investment in this property and all of a sudden it's, it's no guarantee of build it and they will come in terms of additional investment. But I will tell you that it is my absolute belief that if there's going to be any sort of redevelopment of downtown, any interest of downtown, money coming into downtown that's not currently there. I I I believe in my heart that it, the the city's going to have to do that. City's going to have to do that with the property that they own. And city's going to have to step up to the plate and say, we're going to build something or we're going to invest in something that brings people downtown and says, we're here for the long haul. So that it, it's clear that there is some stability down there from the, from the city. The city's not going to let downtown as an asset backslide, to put it quite honestly. So that is my recommendation from, from a staff perspective, based on all the information. I'm happy to answer questions or bring this slides back up. I'm going to go ahead and turn this off so that we can, I can look at everybody in the face.
Yeah, I, Jason, did you have something?
I had a couple of questions when you're done, Mayor.
Okay, before we get into that, I'd like to make a statement myself concerning this issue because this is, this is an issue that I take very seriously and I'm extremely interested in and have been since the beginning of this process. The, I said, first of all, before I get into that, I don't know if there are any members of the fifty seven oh one committee listening, but you guys did a great job. You, you were tasked with an assignment and I think you did what you were tasked and you did a good job at it. So I applaud all the people that were involved in that. I would also like to command the city staff for spending the time it takes to come up with all the options. I presume everyone here has noted that the the staff hasn't come out initially with saying, this is what we have to do or here's, here's what this could do. And this, you know, they presented the the pros and cons of each one of these in a very logical fashion so that we all have the information that we could gather from if if we needed to support a view or one way or the other. They certainly gave us all the ammunition we needed to do to do that. I, one of the luxuries of having been around a long time of the city is kind of get to see the history from a perspective of the beginning. And I was around here when we bought the the community center, Irene B. French Community Center. The building was in horrible condition. It was the city at the time, Irene French as mayor, took a, took a rare opportunity to take a building like that and then turn it into a to a great asset for our city, a community center. And we spent a lot of money to bring that building up, to make it look presentable. And she did, and and the city did a wonderful job with that. But I think we all need to recognize this building was wore out when we bought it. It's worse, it's in worse condition today because there's only certain things you can do with things, with things like leaking basements and mold and 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 all the plumbing and everything that was bad. So that, that we need to understand. So fast forwarding to the last couple of years, we, as a council, made a decision to replace the community center and the pool. We made a decision. We, we first thought about actually putting the pool down where the existing community center is, but after we did some research, we realized that there, that was really a bad idea. We abandoned that based on the feasibility, the money and just the location. Let's face it. I mean, it's a downtown Mariam. It's, it's not really the kind of place a community center and a swimming pool should be. We got the floodplain. There's all kinds of reasons why. We decided to take our show on the road and move it up to Babber Park and do it right. Now, we didn't just simply do that. We had, we had to sell the voters on this as an idea, as a concept, because we were going to have to fund it. Even though the funding comes from sales tax, it's still something that was the right thing to do. That we went out and talked with the voters, explained to them what we were going to do. We had this tired old community center. We got this worn out swimming pool and we're going to get rid of them and move them and join together and have a great purpose built facility. And it's going to be much more usable and it's going to be sized and appropriate for our, our city use and so on. And we got the voters to buy into the fact that this building down here was wore out. And and we've succeeded and now we're building this community center. However, it came, you know, it came up that we need to figure out what we're going to do with the old center. So that's when we started coming, going down this road of deciding whether we're going to keep it or whether we're not going to keep it. I will tell you right now, I've struggled with this from the moment we made the decisions of going down this road of trying to decide whether or not we're going to keep it. And I'll tell you why. First of all, the building is wore out. Second of all, we sold the the community on the fact that that building's wore out and it needed to be replaced. Now, I don't know about your world, but in my world, when something needs to be replaced and you build something new, you don't then change your mind, go down and rehab the old place that you moved out of because it was wore out and shouldn't be open. Plus, we don't have a reason to do that. We have nothing, we have no exotic plan. We're bringing some civic aspect to that building that would require that we spend any money to save it. So I think we're being a little bit disingenuous with voters. If we seriously consider keeping any portion of that building and rehabbing it for some civic use that we haven't even, I haven't even determined what it would be, that, not to mention the fact that it may cost, you know, six million dollars to do it, which of course I would strongly, if we went that direction, require it possible that that be taken back to the voters again. And I doubt very seriously whether it would pass because I won't support it. So I think as we talk forward, there's a lot of great ideas and if you have an idea that's different than mine, I, I, I want to hear it. I respect your ideas, your opinions. I know that this, there are emotions behind this. But I'm kind of a practical person when it comes to this, this kind of stuff. And I believe we, we, while we didn't promise to the voters that we're going to tear that building down, I think it was strongly inferred by the process. And I've already been accused by some of the people who don't support the community center that this was always part of the plan, that we were going to come back and spend millions of dollars to rehab this building. I can assure you, if you're listening out there, that was never my intent. My intent was you move out of the building, you move into the new building, you tear the old building down. So I just want to make sure you understand my views as we go forward because I've been holding on to them. I have not tried to influence the fifty seven oh one committee in any way, shape or form on what they needed to do. I think that's obvious because the result of what they turned out showed was pretty evened and and they did want to give this a shot. And the city's bent over backwards trying to meet the recommendations and requirements of this committee, making the studies, having these engineering studies done by unbiased professionals so that we're armed with the, the information that we have now to make this decision. So now it's time to make a decision. And and then, of course, I've even brought up the fact that with this COVID nineteen, we simply are not in a position to, you know, expend this kind of money for, again, something that hasn't even been determined as as to what its use is going to be. So I'll be quiet now and I'll let you guys make your statements if you wish. And I think, Jason, you said you had a couple of questions, so we can get started with you.
Great, thank you. Yes, this is Jason Silvers. I have two questions to start off. I think, Chris, you'd be the person to ask these of. I noticed in your presentation today and then in the packet that you were very careful to say that you believe that we would be eligible for fifty percent reimbursement through cars. Do you, are you able to make a more definitive statement on that if we're going to be voting on a direction that involves cost?
Well, I would tell you, yes. I, I mean, I would tell you a hun, one hundred percent because it's streetscape. The reality is, is that I can't tell you with a hundred percent certainty because until we submit the actual expenditures to cars, they could pull that out and say, hey, this wasn't there when it started. This is not a replacement. This is, you know, this is something new. But I would tell you that in conversations with our city engineer, we believe that these are eligible costs and would be absolutely reimbursed at fifty cents on the dollar. But they have not been submitted, so I can't give you guaranteed definitive one hundred percent right now. But they, they would be eligible in, in normal times.
Okay, thank you. My second question is, if we go the route where we take down all the buildings and are careful with how we take it down and use Habitat for Humanity to salvage stuff and keep some of the stonework and brickwork from the nineteen eleven building, is the cost of that slower demolition and storage of materials until they can be used for a different project in the cost that was presented to us in this budget? Or would that be additional?
The, that is included in the cost, but it, but that is not a bid. So when we go out to bid, it could be a lot more expensive. It could be less. But that, the projected cost that I've shared with you that comes from the fifty seven oh one recommendation actually has salvaging stone in there. The cost of storage, we would just store those on site. We'd store those either public works or we'd put them in a Conex box that we have. I mean, we would, we would not have to pay for storage of those. The only thing we would have to pay for is the fact that that we, they would need to go in for some parts of that demo with a scalpel versus a sledgehammer. But but yes, that, that should, that that was contemplated in that cost projection.
Okay, thank you. And then I have one more question and you have to forgive me because I wasn't involved at the beginning. So some of these decisions I just am not aware of. But briefly, would it be possible just to explain to me why the redevelopment of this area, whether it was tearing down the buildings or, or renovating them, wasn't part of the initial budget for building the new community center? Because the way I see it, they're kind of connected, but maybe there's a reason why they're not?
Well, because we didn't know exactly what we were going to do. So if the range of cost is between selling it for half a million to two and a half million to redevelop, to tearing it down for half a million to redeveloping it for six to eight, there's not really, I mean, we couldn't, we didn't know what was going to come next because it was clearly something that we were going to have to have this conversation as a council to do because it is, it's a city asset. At that point in time, the conversation was strictly about the future of recreation in terms of our recreation offerings. That's how that kind of played out. In terms of what was going to happen here, it was for some sort of future decision. So we would have, I mean, we could have, I, I wouldn't have known at that point in time what to say. We could sell it for a half million to two million, or we could invest two million to eight million, going either way. That's not, that, that would be information that perhaps because it's not clear enough would muddy the water. I mean, i- i- if we worry about what's going to happen at fifty seven oh one, it becomes the shiny object and detracts from what we were actually talking about, which was the future of recreation. So, yeah, we just, until we had the conversation about what comes next, I wasn't comfortable putting information out there.
Can I ask a follow?
Who is that?
Dave.
Dave. Oh, yes. Well, Mr. Silvers, were you done with your question?
Yes, thank you. And thanks, Chris, for answering that and also putting together, you and your team putting together a great presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Neal, go ahead.
Yeah. In regards to that, is it not correct that we had a, initially, when the plan for the new community center, the master plan was developed, there was also some work done which about what potentially would be done with the fifty seven oh one site, which included essentially an amphitheater, pretty much the same plan or or close to the plan that we, that the fifty seven oh one committee came, came forward with, or at least in in many ways similar to that. And it was taken out for the reasons you just stated, that there was a, you didn't want to muddy the water. But there was some, this thinking has gone back for some time that the site would be best used in some context with Parks and Rec developing concerts and and public events within the downtown area, at least for the it seems like that's a fairly longstanding sort of vision that has been, been around for a while. Is that not? Is that accurate for the, for the new, new people who are here? I mean, I wasn't here either, but I was, you know, in the research that I've done.
Yeah, the, the, the idea of, of the recommendations of fifty, fifty-seven oh one were not, they were not the first group that went through a, a process that kind of spit out on the tail end of it, that we should reuse that property. During the master plan process, they actually presented some possibilities for use at that site that really did not take into account, or did not take, didn't take into account, or not take into account what would happen at that site. So there was actually the thought that you could redevelop that site and put amenities on it, or you could tear it down and put amenities on it. But at that point in time, because that was not really within the scope of what they were trying to do for the master plan, which was not to develop that site, it was actually a broader, what do you wanna do with the future of recreation? Those, they had created, and really, all they did was create a couple of slides. So they created a couple of slides that showed some options that are on the fifty-seven oh one page, that we immediately, when we saw, we said, you can't put those out, we need to pull those back, those are not part of this. That begs a question of how do you pay for all of this, and it muddies the water, because it's not really where we were at. It was, it was three steps further down the road than where we truly were at, and we needed to really focus on eating the elephant one bite at a time. But, but yes, there, it has been a, a, a point of conversation for several years.
Yeah, that, that was the only question. I've seen, certainly would have some comments at some point when we get to this, to that, to that stage.
I'm not sure what stage we're at, but any other questions? Mr. Bruce, did you have a question?
Well, I, I just, through the, all the iterations of this, there's never been a purpose for having another building. And so, you know, yes, we can do it. Yes, we can spend a lot of money to build something that we really don't need. You know, I, without a, without a stated purpose for what we're gonna do with the end product, I just really struggle with spending very much money on it.
Hi, this is Whitney Addrich. So I don't really have much of a, a statement to make, other than, I think it's just kind of sad how in, in America, we don't seem to, to value over decades and generations our, our architecture, our, in our, the history of our architecture as much, and that it kind of led us to this place now where we have to make a decision to preserve our past in this unbelievably ridiculous time where we have to worry so much about revenue. And, and that, that's just sad, that, that communities can, can let their history down like that. Not saying anyone here did that, obviously, it's a very slow roll over decades and decades, but that it came together at this moment is, that's spectacular, how that happened. So with the way I understand it, with the current money that's appropriated for twenty twenty, that amount is enough to cover demolition of all four, I guess, sections of the building, nineteen eleven, nineteen thirty-eight, fifty-one, and eighty-nine.
Based on what the consultants told us as part of fifty-seven oh one, yes.
Okay. And that does include preserving, preservable materials that we come across.
Assuming that we're just talking about some stone and the cornerstone, I mean, if we wanna save all sorts of things, that drives the price up. But yes, there is, there is a, there's a premium that is included in that amount to save some, some what I call relics.
Okay, so original stone, maybe some wood flooring, maybe not even used for those same purposes, but preserved to work into something in the future in some way.
From what, from what I've been told by the consultants, yes.
That's what I read in the bid, I just wanna confirm that. So following that, and when we actually backfill it, I don't know, sod it, whatever we're gonna do, my concern would be property value and, property value and, and I guess, the vacancy and, and issues related to property value and crime by vacant buildings and vacant lots, and how, what is our plan to maintain that area and make sure, you know, that it's not well-lighted, but, you know, doesn't become just like a vacant field that we're mowing it, that we're putting a lot of value into it with the intent of doing something with it, you know, so it's not just kind of like chain link and...
I would imagine we would treat it like we treat the property right across the street, which is the marketplace. We would cut the grass, we would put plantings in there, we would patrol it by the police department, we would treat it like right, right across the street.
Okay, good. Let me see if there's anything else. I think other people answered some of these things. So I was looking over financial goals and objectives in relation to these, and I think there are some opportunities just identified in these twenty twenty-one goals. One thing that I wanted to clarify was the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in tax breaks or incentives, or what are we calling them, tax?
Historic tax credits?
Yes. That does not include any other type of county or federal grant that we may go after or may be available to help with financing either.
Assuming you're talking, that's only available should we choose to save the building. If we were going to save the building, correct, that eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars is just based on the cost of improvements, the things that were eligible based on those costs that, that would be included in, in, that would be in the improvements that SFS identified, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of, that, those improvements are tax creditable through historic tax credit. If there's other grants that are out there, there's nothing in there that reflects any of that.
Okay. So I think that, that we, I've covered most of my concerns, just with the exception of making sure that we make sure it's beautiful and usable for the time being, until we can figure out a more permanent purpose for it.
Hey, Chris, I got a question for you, and I'll let somebody else speak, but maybe my understanding of a tax credit is a little bit too basic, but we don't pay taxes, so how are we gonna get a credit?
It's a great question. We have to sell them. There's a market for selling tax credits. So folks that are nonprofit or do not pay taxes, they can sell those on the market, and there are companies that will buy those tax credits. Now, the reality is, is sometimes because you won't get a dollar-for-dollar value on the market for them, they're looking to buy them at some sort of a discount, but that is how you would do it. We would sell them on the open market. There's a, there's a clearinghouse for tax credits.
That's weird. Okay, thank you. Let's see, someone who hasn't spoken yet, and then I'll get back to Mr. Neal. Anybody wanna make any comments? Bob?
Mr. Pete, you're muted.
Yeah, I was gonna be unmuted by the host, or was I needed to unmute myself? But it looks like I'm, I'm muted now. Yeah, this is primarily just a comment, it's not necessarily a question. I, like you, Mayor, I've been around forever, was there at the beginning, but, you know, it, it's unfortunate that it's come to this point where we're, we're liable to lose a historic portion of our, of our downtown, in reference to having to actually remove the structure. My comment on is that I, I think a lot of those stones could be utilized in something. I, you know, I, I think we're, we're gonna have to have restrooms put back on that site. If we could build a structure, maybe it's a mini version of the current building with the current stones that we take down, if we save enough of them, may, maybe the, the restrooms or a little storage room for, maybe Anna needs addition. I know we have very little storage across the, the road at the apartments market for tables and chairs and things like that, but, but that would be a way somewhat of preserving at least some of the history by, by still having a portion of that, that building still exist. Maybe it's, doesn't look exactly like it was, obviously, it's not going to, but, but the stone could still be there, and I, I think that would preserve some of our, our downtown history and, and that building, and obviously, you know, that seems like we need to explore how big that structure might be that we would need for restrooms and, and any additional storage you might have. But I, I would just be concerned when we make, if we get down to the point of making that decision to, to remove the building, even the nineteen eleven building, that we save enough of that to, to be able to utilize it in whatever we might have to rebuild on that subject. And that's, I just wanna share that.
Yeah, we, we would have, we, we would, again, the, the, the costing that we have is, is an estimate, it is escalated for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, so it should be in the wheelhouse of what it would cost. And clearly, we'd have to get a bid, we'd have to go out and probably, they'd have to take pictures, and we'd say, we wanna keep that, we wanna keep that, we'd like to keep that, we'd like to keep as much of that as we can. And then they would, they would, I'm sure the more of, the more of that that we keep, the higher that the price will get. But we, I mean, that, that will be part of the process, no matter what we do, absolutely.
Well, anybody else that hasn't spoken wanna speak? Christine Hands.
Whoever designed this interface, I would love to have a conversation with them. I, I am definitely moved even more toward letting the building go. I do want to be sure, I'm kind of with Mr. Pete on this, I wanna be sure we have enough stone and brickwork that we can do something creative as well as functional on the site at some point, but I think letting it go now, it just is gonna make sense. We have, and we, we're flying blind once more, we don't really know what our revenues are gonna be, and we certainly don't know how long it's gonna be before, before we get a rebound. So I, I am just not willing to, to invest my, my tax dollars or ask anyone else to invest in building a building or saving a building that we're not quite sure what it's for. So that's me.
Mr. Neal, you're next.
I have no problem take, removing the entire building and just historical perspective. I remember when the South Park Elementary School closed back in two thousand and seven, my wife and I, our, our daughter was going from the second to the third grade, and there was a lot of emotion about that school. The school had a great sense of community to it. But we moved over to Marion Park, and we took some of the historical items from South Park, the Brown versus Board of Education, they have a very large plaque that they moved over to Marion Park. And that made a big difference for us parents, that, that little piece of history was very important. And we loved the new building, students were happy, parents were happy, and so I think reusing the stones will give us that sense of history to tell people with this move. Thank you.
Mr. Devoe.
Yeah, I'd like to agree with, with Mr. Pete. I think we should take it down. I, I think the, you just look at the numbers, the common sense is there, putting that kind of money into a building that needs a lot of work, and, you know, and all the things that with, that Chris presented, one of those things was, is the water gonna go away? It's not. So again, there's gonna be even more issues with trying to get that building, if it's left, to get it so that there's not twenty, thirty, however many pumps we got pumping of water. So, so again, I think from a common sense standpoint, it, it makes a lot of sense to, to go ahead and take buildings down, but again, preserving that history. And Bob, I think Mr. Pete was part of that history. I'd like to know what classroom you sat in sometime, but the, I, I think, you might show me sometime, but, but I think it's important we save as much as we can, obviously feasible, you know, not go crazy, but again, having some, some signage, things like that, that, that honor the, the school history, that honor, obviously, Ivy, French, and, and those things need to be done, and they need to be done well, and there needs to be some thought and, and some dollar value tied to those as well, I think, so that they are done correctly. So that's what, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Neal, I think you're willing to speak again, and we'll get you, we got Whitney and Jason after you, so Mr. Neal?
Yeah. Yeah, this is certainly not a hill I'm gonna wanna die on. I've obviously been involved in a lot of the thinking, and I was on the fifty-seven oh one committee, and I don't particularly have a specific idea of what needs to be done, but I also don't think that we need to rush into it, making a decision to demolish the building at the moment. There are a lot of other little factors that guide that thinking, and one of them is that I don't believe that the public, this is a public asset, that, and the public has not, in my view, had a, 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 enough of an opportunity to weigh in on that. We did have some, we did have a process, we had people come, but they were people who generally had an interest, and I counted that there were about thirty people plus the, plus the committee, who actually were involved in any way, and they came up with, with a, a proposal for the site that is not to demolish, not demolishing the site. The old plan of putting a, an amphitheater suitable for concerts and, you know, public space has been around for a long time, and essentially demolishing the building right now, because we have decided that we, you know, whatever reason, it has to be done right now, is the first step in, essentially, in my view, creating that space for the amphitheater. And I'm not saying that's a bad idea, but the decision about demolishing the historic structure is a permanent decision, and it's, can't be undone, and I think that the public needs to weigh in more. I think we need to have some more surveys that are, that, that are, we, we attempted to do that when we walked around the neighborhood, West Vernon Place last year, on some other matters, and invited people to participate in another survey that we did, which wasn't seen by anybody else, but we had pretty good response, that people wanted to weigh in, and they had some ideas about that that are distinctly different, and those haven't really been fully, well, they haven't been looked at at all, and they, my suggest, my thought is that if we rushed into a decision, we're going to take quite a bit of criticism for making a decision without, you know, a, a, a real public process. I think that the cost of keeping the utilities on, this is something that could be discussed in the next election, and we would know, or we could do some more survey before we did this, is not cost prohibitive. And so, you know, my recommendation is, I don't know what we should do, but I don't think that any of us really have the, enough information to make that kind of a permanent decision at the moment. I don't, I honestly don't know what the answer is, but I'm uncomfortable voting to, to demolish the building at this point. The, everything that I've read, and in the time I've been on the council and been involved with National League of Cities and first-tier suburbs, is that your old downtowns and, and a sense of identity are really important for the long-term viability of the first-tier suburbs, and our downtown doesn't have many historic buildings, but there's, there's that, that building, and there's another one, and that's it. And if we take away half of those structures, then what historic piece do we have left? So those are decisions that I think that the community should make rather, with more, and we should make on their behalf with more information than we have right now. So I don't think we, I, I'm opposed to the, the staff recommendation as it stands, doesn't mean that's not the right thing to do, but I don't think we need to do it right now.
Okay. Whitney, did you have a comment?
Um, yeah, I, you know, David, I respect your opinion, but I wanna challenge the, the notion that we don't have enough facts to decide what to do with the future of the building. I don't see us in a position right now, with COVID finances uncertain, us already paying back bonds on the community center, taking on debt, is not a... I don't see us in a position right now with COVID finances uncertain, us already paying back bonds on the community center, taking on debt is not a, a smart move in the, it's not a move in the right direction. I know you didn't, you say you were in favor of that. I, I think we have all of the facts we need to figure out what is the best move for this property that keeps the property value up, that helps to try at least preserve some history. That wouldn't be sitting in a vacant building that would start to decrease property value around it as it sits and sits and sits and we feed utilities and deal with flooding issues. If the building floods again, it's a liability and the land itself is an asset. And you know, like I never, I rarely sit here and say, well, I have this and this background, but I studied a lot of architecture and art history and and I would be, I would really love to save the building, but as I said initially, decades of decisions have made it to the point where it is not in the best interest of the future of the city financially and the hopes that we have for downtown to let that sit there. And, and I just disagree with you on that point about all the facts that we have. And, and the facts that have done in numerous studies on vacant properties and, and leaving vacant buildings versus vacant lots and turning them into assets instead of liabilities. If we're talking about preservation and reuse, Bob, I've got a lot of credit for something that I said first. But I don't, I think it's a mutual feeling among everyone. One point I was going to make on that about David saying, you know, we should reach out to the community. I know he often mentions his walk around West Vernon Place. We do have in our goals and objectives to include the citizens, some more surveys and polls on community issues. To me, this is the future of this building at this point. The community should have a vested interest in the future of it and the current state of it, from looking at it from financial perspective, a design perspective, an architecture perspective, money, you know, like it, it just, it's a decision that we as the trustees of the community from that approach need to make on our own. And I am on board in including the public in the future plans more because I wasn't also on the council when the steering committee made the recommendations, but I don't like any of them necessarily. So I, I agree with you there, but I, I just think we should be mindful in saying that there aren't enough facts available or aren't enough details available to make a choice.
Jason?
I actually have, I wanted to clarify something because I actually, I think I agree with Whitney on not necessarily being sold on any of the designs that were brought to us. But something Chris said was that option C was the same as B and B1, but without one building. Do we have any options of just raising the building and, and leaving it an open field?
That, that actually is, is, is my short-term recommendation is that I, is not that we jump right into doing anything, is that we, we, we take the building down and we just plant grass and then we wait until we figure out what our long-term plan is. It is to remove the building. And then, I mean, but, but the reality is, is that if, if depending on what the next two or three months look like, it looks like there's the possibility to stick some design money in there to actually start a process of what, if the council does not like the recommendations of what are currently presented there, we could have another process. We could, we could give, give your feedback back to the 5701 committee and kind of send them back to the drawing board if that's the will of the council. But yeah, my, my plan is, or my recommendation would be, let's just have it be a grass field for the, for the short term, not the long term, but for the immediate future. Yes. Yes, sir. That, that is an option.
Okay. You clarify, what my confusion was, was is option C, or what you were saying, raise the building, grass it over and just wait until we choose to do B or C. You're saying that there's a chance that we could go back to the drawing board.
Well, we can do whatever the will of the council is. I think I would hesitate to completely discount the work of our citizen volunteers that had a process and used a consultant and made a recommendation. I don't know that we would, I don't know that I would recommend going back to the drawing board, but I mean, if there are some tweaks that the council collectively would like see to that plan, or there's some features that perhaps are not missed the mark, we can absolutely get that group back together or start another process if that's what the council would like.
Thank you. Mr. Neal?
Yeah, since I was, Whitney, I'm not saying that I was in favor of anything specifically that the committee came up with and I wasn't. I'm not. But my concern was, is just that this is a significant community asset that people have some strong feelings about. And I don't, I just don't see that in the, within the next three months that we need to make a decision that we don't know what our finances are going to be. And that, and that's the reason that I'm, I'm, as I said, it's not a hill I'm planning to die on. It's just, I'm putting this information out that I think that the decision to defer for a short while on a final decision to, to demolish the building or all of the building, or even to determine what artifacts, you know, we're going to save can, can wait until we have a better handle on our finances. That's my view. And I just feel that that's why I said we don't have enough information. We don't have enough information on the economic impact of COVID-19 yet either. So there's a number of factors in that, in that, that was packed, or packed into that statement. I don't, I'm not an advocate of necessarily saving the building. I'm just an advocate for a process that I believe would be more inclusive than what we've had, because I just don't feel that we've had enough input from the public. And that's, you know, that's just an opinion. And so I'm not going to, you know, it's obvious that there's a sense, strong sense to, to move forward and, and, you know, I'm, if that's the will of the council, that's fine. I mean, that's fine. But I'm stating sort of my point of view because it's a little bit different and a little, little more nuanced. So.
Yeah, I, I would agree. And certainly we respect your views. One of the things though, I, I want to make sure we reiterate the fact that this was, this was a process that involved citizen input and it involved opportunities for people who are interested to come to the work sessions, the, the committee meetings, make their, you know, their knowledge or basically their opinions known, involve themselves. This is an open process. The public was invited. And I think, I don't know that anybody was on that committee was jaded one way or the other when it started. I would say they weren't just based on, on the findings. So, I mean, I think, you know, at some point we have to decide what we're going to do because that's what we're, we're actually elected to do. If we were to open this up, get more information from the citizens, let's say, there was a mention made about maybe a survey. Well, you know, the way I look at it is if we were going to do that, not, of course, we didn't know this in the first place, but it, it's kind of a slap in the face of the, of the steering committee if we say, you know, we thank you for your work, but oh, now we're going to go talk to everybody else and see what they think and then make a decision based on that. And then the problem with that is, of course, how, how in the world do you educate people enough in a survey so that they can make an educated approach to their answer? The steering committee went through hours and hours and hours of information from experts before they were ever asked to make a decision. We wouldn't be able to do that on a survey. And, and I'll be honest with you, people do not have, nor do they want it to partake the time it would take to become educated to make a good decision. Sometimes we have to trust ourselves. Sometimes we get a steering committee of interested citizens because it's, it's, it's the most efficient way of doing things. This is called governing. This isn't a democracy where everybody has the opportunity to decide. This is a, you know, a representative republic and, and we're the ones that are elected to make the decisions, the hard decisions at times. And I think in this case, we have lots of information to make it from. And, and we've had lots of dialogue on this. And I think we're ready to move forward. May not be the, it may not be the outcome that everybody wants, but it rarely is. And, and I, I learned a long time ago about trying to please everybody. That doesn't usually work. Any other comments? We're not running out of time or anything, but I, I would like if anybody has something they'd like to say that hasn't been said or needs to be said, now's the time to do it. Mr. Neal?
And, and I'm, I totally understand what you're saying, Mayor. I just, in this particular case, we are, you, you just mentioned the, the 5701 committee and they came up with some recommendations. We're proposing to do something completely different. And that's my concern. I think that we need more information because of that, the fact we are not doing what the, the committee recommended. And, and I understand that that's our role and I'm, I get that. And so the will of, you know, we are a democracy. The will of the group is, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that. I'm just pointing that out.
Yeah. And, and I, I see what you're saying, but we, we, we challenged them with, with coming up with ideas, but they, they actually did, they weren't fully responsible because first of all, the ideas that they were to come up with didn't have price tags attached to them. One of the things I initially challenged them with is to come up with an idea of determining how, whatever your idea was going to be, how, where it was going to be paid, how it was going to be financed. They didn't do that. Plus, I mean, we still got the, the condition of that building, where it's located at. And then we didn't have the COVID-19. So there's a lot of things that have changed. But mainly, even with the recommendation, they said, hey, we'd like to keep 1911 building if A, it's salvageable and B, we can afford it. Well, we studied both of those things. And, and my interpretation is it's not salvageable, given the cost, which is totally unreasonable. I mean, if I were a citizen and you came to me and said, hey, I'd like to spend $3 million, $4 million, $6 million to save an old, older building in a floodplain with a rotten basement. So we might be able to use it for something that we haven't identified with. I would have to shake my head at you and, and, and think that you were crazy. I, I think that's what our voters would say. If we said, you know what? We, if we just went and done a survey and said, hey, would you like to save the old building? It's an old historic building. Would you like to save it? Well, 90% of people would just say yes. But then if you said, hey, would you like to save it? No, by the way, here's how much we're going to have to raise your taxes to do that. I think you're going to get a different view. If we had a plan, if we had a need, we were on ball and board with that, we'd have, be having a totally different discussion right now. If COVID-19 wasn't here, you know, but it is. And we're the ones that have to deal with reality. And, and, you know, 10 years or 20 years from now, you may look back and say, boy, those people really made a big mistake. But, you know, we got to operate with what we got to work with right now and the realities of, of what we have. And, and waiting a year from now to decide, I don't see it changing anything. Now, that building's going to be one year older. That site can't remain standing because it will be subject to vandalism. It will require an enormous amount of patrol to keep it, you know, keep people away from it. It will potentially cause a decline in the area property values. You know, there's a lot of talk about things that we should do to try to help our downtown flourish and get better. Well, I can tell you historically, we tried that in the eighties. We put in a brand new street. We did a lot of improvements down there. We didn't get the results we were looking for. The time we didn't know, and now if we look back, we'll say, well, there's a reason for that. You can't improve those buildings down there. They're in the floodplain. That's why our downtown doesn't look any better than it does now. And the other building, the other historical building that exists, it's not in very good shape either, for a lot of the same reasons that we're tearing this, this community center down. And so, you know, that's probably why a lot of old historic buildings aren't here today is because they've just simply rotted away. And it wasn't worth saving them because it didn't make financial sense.
Mr. Neal?
Yeah. And, and again, I agree with all that. The buildings and most of the buildings in downtown are obviously in the floodplain. You know, the Upper Turkey Creek project may or may not happen, although my sense is that infrastructure projects are something they're, they're looking, going to be looking for in the next couple of years. And we've put that, I've personally been putting that forward as much as possible with, in my visits in DC in this March, actually was, I got a much better response than ever before. So there's some hope there. But the second thing that this, the current historic section, well, actually the whole building is not in the floodplain, as far as I'm concerned, as far as I'm, I'm aware. So, but one of the things that came out of the survey that we did, because we actually included it as an option amongst a number of options, was sell the building and allow someone to, some ideas from the private sector to see what they wanted to do, what they could do with it. And then we could make a decision. And that option actually was an option that the 5701 committee didn't consider. The building may or may not be worth some money. It's a city asset. And I just have a problem deciding to demolish it before all, all our options are, are fully.
Okay. I, I get that. I think you may have froze up. Still there, Mr. Neal?
You can see me, but I can't see much.
Oh, yeah, you kind of quit talking to us, but I thought maybe you froze up. Christine, do you have a comment?
Yes, I do. Because I too was on that committee and we certainly did talk about whether to sell the building and it was fairly universally in the committee decided that maintaining that ownership of that property right across from the marketplace would give the city this amazing presence in downtown. And we didn't just out of hand not consider selling the building. We did not know what it would bring or anything like that. And then a couple of other points. The time that we have spent on 5701, if we go back based on what the mayor's idea was, that when we started talking about replacing Irene B. French, I mean, and we put that to the people and they voted and they said, you're right, this building is awful. We want to replace it. So that's been going on for how many thousands of years? I mean, how many years has that been going on? A long time, a long time for people to talk about it. And then the last point I have is, you're saying that the plan is not what was in the, the plan of the committee. The plan that we're seeing tonight of just tearing down the building and having an empty field is not what we presented from the committee. That part is true, but we're not saying we're going to keep it this way forever. And the plans that the committee has already put out there, we're, we're just doing step, step A in getting ready for saying, is that design the right one to go forward with? So that's, so I'm totally comfortable with what I said before. Let's let it go. Thanks.
Anyone else? Yes.
If I could just, just to clarify my recommendation, my recommendation is actually to do all of the stuff that 5701 recommends at the site. It's just not to move forward with it right at this point. My, my, my recommendation, the staff recommendation, well, my recommendation is to tear the building down, plant grass and wait. But we are just going to wait for a better understanding of our financial situation before we, before I would recommend that we move forward with all the other things that are at that site. Now, is it exactly those things, where they are and what it looks like? And are they oriented this way? And what's possibly, maybe not. But, but my recommendation from a staff perspective is that we should not just have a field down there forever. We should make some improvements to that site when appropriate to do so. So I just wanted to make sure that, 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 that my recommendation is clear.
All right. Well, we don't vote. This is a work session. We just talk. And we, I guess the ultimate
And we, I guess the ultimate goal is to give us the opportunity to be a little less formal in what we say, maybe a little more honest about how we feel. But also to give staff an idea of what we want to see done so that they can move forward to bring something back to the council. And it, when he brings it back, the council is going to be more formal. It's more going to be more specific and then we'll be having a discussion about that specific issue at that time and voting on what needs to be done. So unless someone hasn't had the opportunity to speak and wants to. I think we're getting close, Bob.
Yeah, I I already spoke about, I I would just like to speak one more time. You know, Dave and I agree on a lot of things as far as we're we're very big in trying to get input from the public. I I will disagree with David, or, you know, Mr. Neil, sorry, in reference to, I think I know what our constituents is going to say. I think you alluded to this earlier, Mayor. Was that if we went back and asked people, and I and I asked a lot of people when I was out talking one on one, I said, are you interested in saving the building? Or keeping the building? And yes, there was. But I also followed that question up with if if, you know, if it's going to cost us, you know, we don't know how many millions it might cost. But would you be willing to raise your property taxes to save the building? It became very clear to me that no one was willing to raise their taxes. And and just looking at, and I I I guess I defer to Mr. Engel, but if we were to try to put another five or six million dollars in it, we're going to have to raise some taxes. And I I think we know the answer, that nobody wants that, or at least very, very, very small percentage would would be willing to spend more money on their taxes to try to save an old building, which we don't really know what, you know, we're going to do with it, you know, as well. So I I guess in that sense of, you know, from from Mr. Neil's standpoint, I I'd like to get more input from, as he says, on what we're going to do with with the current, you know, once, once we decide, once this thing's removed and it becomes a grassy knoll, what are we going to do with it? Because I I'm not so sure that we can't get more input from the public about, you know, some changes. Well, that big building is not in the middle of it, which, you know, we can move things around, we can decide what else needs to be put on there. There's a, there's a lot more we can do and I think we can seek input at that point. But I I think I have enough information from our constituents and our citizens to know that they are not willing to raise your taxes to to save that building. So I just throw that out.
Mr. Neil.
Yeah, and I I agree with that, that there's a tax. The tax question is 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 relevant and I just would have liked to have seen the option of of possibly someone else going in there and doing something with it would not also, would also be a non-tax situation and that that opportunity is precluded if we tear down the building. Then that's all I'm saying. I mean, I'm not, you know, I agree with I agree with the the idea that we don't, we certainly would be irresponsible to send, to spend a lot of money right now. I didn't think that you know, maintaining the building for, you know, six months, eight months to see where things stand and go doing some additional outreach, particularly including possibly looking at at an interest in possibly purchasing the property as an option would be out of out of bounds, but that is not obviously the will of the group and I'm okay with that, but that's, you know, that's kind of where I was coming from, so.
Okay. Chris?
I I was just going to add real quick that I I think if there is a, because we really did not council did not really chew on the recommendation of the fifty seven oh one committee at the time, because we needed to have this type of a conversation, we needed to have some further professional services done, which we have. But I think that the fifty seven oh one committee is a good group. Should we get to a point where we want to go back and have some folks look at it? I think, you know, fifty seven oh one did a really, really good job because they well, they did a good job, but they also had a tough job because they had to decide what to do with that while honoring the past, which meant saving the building, but also doing something new and creating catalyst. I think if fifty, if if the council were to provide direction to fifty seven oh one at some point in time, that, hey, we'd like you to go back and take a look at option A, B, C, or D on this site, but you don't have to worry about that building being there. I think it's quite possible they could they they'd actually have a much easier job presenting that because it does take that out of the equation. I'm just putting that out there that if council is not pleased with the recommendation that they made, that I would not discount that group. I think that group was, is, remains a good group. I continue to send them emails from time to time, keeping them updated on what we're doing. So I I would suggest if if when the time comes, we just reengage that group because they are a good group of folks with a nice diverse background. That'd be my only comment.
I'm just saying.
I just want to second that, though, that the the committee was a great group. People did a lot of good work and I and I want to make sure that that's clear, that I believe that that they did a good job and I appreciate everything that they did, so.
Mr. Naff, do you have a question or a comment?
Just a comment. If we choose to tear down the building, could we not reengage the fifty seven oh one committee with new recommendations and put that in the twenty year plan? Could that be an option?
In the, what do you mean by the twenty year plan?
We're working on our new twenty year comprehensive plan. Yes.
Yeah, I I would, I would go as far as to say that, well, I'm sure there are will be big impacts on clearly the economy from COVID. I'm not sure that you know, we're, we need the twenty year horizon more so than we just need a few years to figure. I mean, we could, we could go through a design process considerably cheaper than the actual improvements would, cost would be to figure out what it is that we would like to see there. So it is possible that in the next couple of years, perhaps next year, you know, we could put a modest sum of money in the CIP to actually have that process and go through a design process again and not get to the construction point of it. I mean, almost like a master plan process for that site, if you will. But but yeah, it we, it could be included in the comp plan. It is the same consultants, but I'm just not sure that we need to look on a twenty year horizon. I think we can have something there in the next five years, I would hope.
Very good. Whitney, did you have a comment? I thought I saw you.
Um, I I'm just echoing actually, Brian, what you said. I, knowing the people who are on the committee and and having talked to them a lot about it last year and and their work, I think it would be almost a gift for them to have a confirmed plan with what's going to happen with that building. Because right now, what we're looking at, we see those recommendations is high level conceptual. This is our idea. This is this direction. This is this direction. Instead of just going like east, west, north, now we can start to refine refine our our direction even more. And and that would be, I think, yeah, like I said, a gift.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, I think we talked there, talked it through pretty well. Unless there's some desire to to talk further, I'd like to go ahead and end this and we have our next encounter as a council would be next month. And I found working with Mr. Engel to see about him bringing something forward so that we can memorialize some of the work that's been done this evening at that point and have further discussion at that point. Does that sound like a good idea?
Yes, sir. We'll see what we can do between now and then if you're talking to me.
All right. Well, thank you again for your time. I think it's been very educational. And we'll have a great holiday for, to the degree that we can, and we'll see you down the road.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate everybody tuning in.
Thank you.